11:00 PM, I'd like to call the June 8th City Council meeting to order. Because of COVID-19 restrictions, our meeting tonight is being held virtually via Zoom. Public comments for this meeting were accepted in advance by mail and email. These comments will be read into the public record shortly. If you would like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit www.marium.org and follow the directions listed here. As a reminder, to the City Council, please be conscientious of others trying to speak. Speak slowly and clearly, and state your name prior to speaking. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. The format for the council consideration on items tonight will be staff presentation, and then I will open time for council questions. Please hold questions until the end of the staff presentation. If you have a question when I ask for them, please physically raise your hand so that I can see your video. And bear in mind, I can only see about half of you at once, so I'm going to need a little help on that. So, City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sizem.
Here.
Councilmember Debold.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Knapp. It's muted.
I got it.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Very good. I'm going to alter from the script a little bit before we get into our public comments. Because I have a short statement for the citizens of Mariam as the mayor and on behalf of the city. The year 2020 has been an incredibly challenging year for everyone. We have residents that have lost their jobs. Many of our businesses have closed, some may not reopen. We have residents that have suffered from the coronavirus. Many have sheltered in place out of fear of attracting this disease. Then, just as things started to return to normal, we have all had to witness an unfortunate, needless police brutality incident in Minneapolis, which has sparked protests and riots across this great nation. Despite COVID-19 and events surrounding the death of Mr. George Floyd in Minneapolis, our community continues to move forward. The city of Mariam mourns the loss of George Floyd and others who represent tragedies that violate the high ideals of our country and our community. Still, we remain committed to fostering diversity, and we pledge to continue to professionally serve the people who live, work, and visit our great city. I would like to conclude my remarks by asking for a few moments of silence so that we may reflect on those that have lost their lives or livelihood due to coronavirus. And at the same time, I would also like everyone to include thoughts or prayers for the family and friends of Mr. George Floyd and all those who have been affected by injustice or racial insensitivity. I will now ask for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, did we have any public items this evening?
We have three public items, Mayor, but they are agenda items, so we will read those when we get to those items.
Very good. Well, then, I'm going to move my sheet up here a little bit. We're going to move into the consent agenda. And as normal, all items listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless it's council member requests, in which case that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered separate. We actually have two items on the consent agenda this evening. And I'll open this up for anyone who would like to have either of the two items removed. Does anyone wish to have either of these two items removed? Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion and a second for the agenda items. Mr. Pape?
Bob Pape, Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve consent agenda items one and two.
Then I'll need a second.
This is Scott Debold.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Debold.
I second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Way ahead of you, sorry about that. Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp. Yes. Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Very good. Those items have passed. We'll move next into the mayor's report. One item on this agenda having to do with employee service awards for the second quarter of 2020. Normally, we have the pleasure of seeing most, if not all, of the people receiving the awards, but under the circumstances, I'm going to ask a representative of the city to let us know who's eligible so that we can honor them.
Sure, Mayor. Chris Engel, City Administrator, happy to do so. As council's aware, every quarter, we acknowledge kind of benchmark every five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30-year employee service award. So unfortunately, we've been unable to meet because of COVID, but we wanted to acknowledge our second-quarter 2020 employee service award, so I'm just going to announce them, get them in the record. These folks have been reached out to at staff level previously. Appreciation shared with each of them. With five years of service, we have Scott Debold on the City Council, Kristin Jazinski in our Police Department, Councilmember Bob Pape, Joe Segor in our Park and Recreation Department, and Tom Wenninger in Public Works. Each of them have hit their five years of service in this last quarter, so congratulations to each of them. Appreciate all their efforts. We have no 10-year levels of service. We have several 15-year level of service. Chris Evans Hands on our City Council with 15 years. Congratulations to her. Diane Timmons in our Parks and Recreation Department, also 15 years of service. Wes Waller in our Police Department. And Nick Wyler in our Police Department also. All four of them have hit 15 years of service, dedicated service to the city of Mariam. So appreciate all of their great efforts too and the work they've put in. And then we have one, we don't do these very often, but we have one 25-year of service award, and that is to Donna Shirley in our Public Works Department. Donna's been here for 25 years, answering the phones and keeping everything straight down in Public Works, so we appreciate the efforts that she's put in, in her 25 years of service. So again, thank you to all of our five-year, 15-year, and 25-year service awardees. Job well done, and on behalf of city staff and the residents, I want to thank each and every one of them for the efforts that they put in.
I think we should all give them a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to just let the council know that ALS for cheering and clapping is this, which comes over really well when you're muted.
Very good. That's a very good point. Okay, well, let's move on to Finance and Administration. Again, the format for consideration, the rest of our agenda will be as follows. The staff make a presentation, the council will ask, be asked the whole questions till the end, and then once the presentation's over, we'll have the council ask questions. And then again, don't forget to raise your hand, state your name, so that people can all recognize who's there. The first item is Consider Acceptance of the 2019 Audit Report. Ms. Shirley?
Mayor and council members, tonight Tara Loughlin with our auditors, AGH are here to kind of give you a brief update on the audit. Thankfully, it is completed. You received copies with the agenda. And so with that, I will let Tara make her comments.
And then, there you go.
Yes, good evening. Yeah. Hopefully, y'all can hear me okay. This is my first council presentation via Zoom, so getting a new experience tonight. As Donna mentioned, I'm here tonight to present the 2019 CAFER audit results, which I do annually with all of you. I first wanted to just start off by thanking Donna and Trish and all the staff that we worked with during the audit, especially this year, having to do the audit completely off-site, put even more work on the staff than usually when we can come onsite and having to scan and send us stuff remotely. So I really do appreciate all the help that we do receive from Donna, Trish, and the rest of the folks at the city that helped us through the audit. Considering everything going on, we got through the audit pretty smoothly. So we did get through it relatively timely with the COVID issues that we had to deal with. So I'm happy to report that. We are engaged, of course, to audit the city's annual financial report, which you all should have a copy of. Through this audit, we make sure that the city is materially presenting the financial statements and activities of the city throughout the year. But also, we are looking at internal control and compliance with certain state statutes and laws as well. And I'm happy to report that we did not have any issues related to any of those items that came out of the audit. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level of opinion you can achieve, which is the same opinion that the city has received in prior years. This year, there was actually no significant new accounting policies or statements that were implemented by the city. There was a few that were technically effective, but none were really applicable for the city of Mariam. So you shouldn't see any substantive changes as far as if you're looking at last year's CAFER to this year's accounting policies, pretty much the same as they were in the prior year. There are certain matters through auditing standards that we are required to communicate with the governing board, so we take this time to do that. You should have received a separate letter that was addressed to the board that we call a governance letter that outlines those required communications in writing. That letter, as far as kind of the general information in that letter, has not changed significantly from last year, so I'm going to cover the things that do change from year to year. That's really the result of the audit. So first off, I've already talked about accounting policies. There was no new significant accounting policies this year. We also like to point out that, of course, not all the numbers in the financial report can be hard-known numbers. There are estimates involved in that process. The city has three estimates we consider significant to the financial statements. They are the same that the city has had in the prior years. One is related to estimating compensated absences liability. So we look at the city's policies and how management is estimating those for reasonableness. The other is related to other post-employment benefits or OPEB liabilities for retiree healthcare costs. The city uses actuaries to help determine that liability. So we review the information and the assumptions used by the actuaries to make sure that they are in line with the accounting standards. And then the same thing for the net pension liability. This is the city's share of the CAFERS pension liability. That again is determined by actuaries, so we do similar testing with that as well to make sure assumptions being used were appropriate and allowable under the accounting standard. For all three estimates, we did determine that management's way of making estimates was reasonable, and we looked at the inputs to make sure that those inputs were reasonable as well. We did have, we are required to report audit adjustments. We did have only two audit adjustments this year, and the dollar values of these weren't too significant. Outlined, one was related to adjusting accounts payable, and this was really just to adjust GAAP information for a liability that was recorded but hadn't yet been incurred. So it was a liability correctly for budget, just wasn't quite a liability for GAAP, and that was roughly $35,000. And then we added roughly $68,000 to construction and process assets related to some equipment and vehicle costs that had been paid, but the vehicles themselves had not yet been received until after year-end. I think they were doing some things to the vehicles. So again, that was only $68,000, so if you look at your financials, neither of those were too significant a dollar value. The last item that I specifically want to point out is related to what's called uncorrected misstatements. The city did not have any uncorrected misstatements. What these would have been is maybe items we identified during the audit that the city did not reflect within the financials, but we did not have any of those items this year. So overall, a really clean, really clean audit for the city. And again, unmodified opinion on the financials, which means it materially reflects the books and records of the city for the year. There are some other information within the letter that we do provide you, and sometimes this gets lost in the middle, and I like to point it out. We had no disagreements with management. Again, Donna, Trish, and all the folks there were very helpful, especially this year on giving us information. They responded to our questions timely to help us address any questions we did have that came up during the audit process. So again, everybody was really, really easy to work with and very responding to our questions that we had. The last little section of our little letter that we give you is the last couple pages or so. This is just general matters that we provide to all of our clients. So this is not saying necessarily this is a specific issue to the city, but it's just general information out there that we'd like to have our clients be aware of. Both of this relates to information security governance. So we just give some information about what's going on in the world in the IT area, just so you guys are up to date. And if you happen to have any questions or issues related to IT security, we have some really good folks in our IT department that can help address any issues that may come up during the year related to that. So with that, that's kind of what I'm required to present, so I will open it up to any questions any of you may.
Okay, well, thank you for that report. Do we have any member of the council with a question? Let's see any takers. So if there are no questions, then I'll entertain a motion and, or a second to accept the audit report. Christine?
This is the mayor. I move that the council acknowledge receipt of the city's 2019 financial audit report.
Mr. Pape?
This is Bob Pape, and I second, Mayor.
We have a motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Member Hands?
Aye, and I want to commend auditors and city staff on doing this process in these circumstances. It had to be extremely awkward. Well done.
Thank you. Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Excuse me, aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Very good. That motion passes. Next item for consideration is Sir Approval Amendment to the Property Conveyance Agreement with the Johnson County Library Board. Meredith?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm actually going to talk about the next two items on the agenda in this staff report, so I'll cover the addendum to the agreement as well as the agreement for shared property, shared parking and property maintenance. I will note that the action that we take tonight will go on to the library board at their June meeting, and we do have members of our library partner team on the call with us tonight if there are any specific questions that we might need to help work through. And so, big picture, these are pretty simple portions of our overall agreements with the library. If you recall, last fall, we were before you to approve a property conveyance agreement, and that was approved. And so the addendum tonight basically does two things. One, it incorporates a library drive-through lane just formally into the project. That is something that we have always planned for. It is already included in the site design and the site layout of that entire property. This is just formalizing it. And then, two, it incorporates the next agreement that we'll talk about, the shared maintenance agreement into the addendum. So that is what the addendum does. There were no other changes with that property conveyance agreement. The second agreement is one of the agreements we said we would come back to when we went through that property conveyance agreement, and these are the terms of how the library and city will work together as partners on that site. And essentially, what it's saying is that the library will contract with the city to provide a number of services. So maintenance of the parking structure, and actual parking spaces for their facility, and then things that it makes sense for us to partner on, like snow removal throughout the property. It makes sense to just have one company doing that. Exterior landscaping maintenance, it makes sense for one company to just be doing that. And then, of course, we'll have property in between our two buildings, the plaza. And so we will want to work out terms on how we collaborate in that space and how both facilities are able to use it. So this agreement lays out the parameters for that, and then it says that we will be back before the library opens to actually approve the fees. One of the reasons we want to delay the fees coming back is that we haven't operated the building yet, and once we set the fees, they're set for the next five years. And so we want to understand what it costs to do the things that are identified in this agreement so we can have a conversation with the library using real numbers instead of hypothetical numbers. So we will be back again closer to when the library opens in, you know, 2022, 2023 timeframe to discuss fees and set those so that when the building opens, we understand how this agreement in totality will look between our two organizations. So I'm happy to answer questions about either of these two agreements.
Let's start with the first agreement, which is the property conveyance agreement. Does any member of the council have a question regarding this?
Looks like Jason does.
Jason, go ahead.
I had a question regarding the drive-through. Is this the proper time to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. You said that it was part of the plan from the start, but I don't remember seeing a curb cut on what I assume is the southeast side of the property for this drive-through. Is that where the drive-through would come in?
So the drive-through is actually, will be contained within the pad site that we're giving to the library. So it will be off of the drive going into the lower level of the parking structure. So we have not put in the curb cuts for that because the curbs will likely have to be reconstructed as part of that project. So it is accounted for in the spacing and the size of the pad already. And the roads were designed to work with it.
Okay, so they, so if people are coming to use the drive-through, they come in through that main entrance and just take like a circular drive?
Yeah, so it would work where you're, you would, as it has been contemplated, and I will just say that they have not gone through, you know, final design. We've just gone through a very kind of schematic, high-level design of their property. They'd go, you'd drive as if you're going into the parking structure on the lower level, and there would be a turnoff of that lane, so you could get it from either IKEA or Slaver.
Okay, and I had a question about the shared common area, the plaza, as you referred to it. Is this a proper time for this question?
Why don't we go ahead and see if we have any more on the conveyance agreement, and then we can get a motion second and move to that. Anyone else have a question on the first item, which would be item number two? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion and a second. Mr. Pape?
Yeah, Mr. Pape, and I'd move the council to approve an addendum to the property conveyance agreement with Johnson County Library Board.
This is the mayor.
Yes.
This is, this is Hands, and I second that.
Motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
The motion passes, so, and Mr. Silvers, do you have a question regarding the maintenance agreement?
It wasn't actually in regards to the maintenance agreement, but it did have to do with the shared space. Will the Johnson County Library have the ability to section off parts of the shared space for parties or events? You're on mute.
Yeah, we'll anticipate that both the city will be able to do that and the library will be able to do that, and it is designed in such a way that it would not impact access to either building, depending on who was closing it for what reason. But yeah, it's designed to be event space for between our two facilities.
Okay, and then I had one more question just as a learning, learning experience for me. I'm just, can someone explain to me why a geological survey wasn't conducted before building the parking garage, knowing that the parking garage was being built to accommodate the community center, but also as part of the Johnson County Library? And I guess that's my question.
Yep, it was, it was. We conducted our own geological surveys on the site, but Johnson County retains the right to come in and do that for themselves as part of their project as well. And so we did share some of the data from the surveys that we conducted, but of course, they need to do their due diligence also. And so, yeah, we did plenty of testing across the site for our own purposes. And any that was referenced in these documents for them is just part of their due diligence before taking on the project.
Okay, I was concerned only because it was, it gave them the ability to back out of the contract, so I wanted to know that.
Right, and we did a lot of that work before we actually got too far into these agreements, but of course, that takes time, and you have to see, you know, kind of where the actual property lines are, that sort of stuff. So, yeah.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Hands?
Hands here. Yeah, my question is about the specifications on the parking for the JCL employees. I don't really have a problem with what the conclusion was, but I'm very curious. Was this a point of contention that it's been so explicit?
No, it's not a point of contention. We just want to make sure that as we get into this partnership, that we are, you know, clear upon where people are going to park and how parking will work for that facility, because we do share it. And, you know, I think there will be times when that parking structure gets pretty full, and so we want to make sure we understand how parking requirements are being met and where not only their patrons will be parking, but their library employees as well. So we did talk about it, but it was not a point of contention at all. We just wanted to make sure 10 years from now, we have properly captured our conversation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Pape?
This is Bob Pape. Yeah, I, just as a review, can you tell me how many current, how many spaces the current library project has? I know we're asking for, or they're asking for 42 shared spaces. I just wondered how that compared to what they, what they currently have.
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't know what that number is. But this is based off the same ratio that we're using for the community center building, so it uses that same formula for their square footage and their facility.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second. Mr. Pape?
Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve the shared parking and maintenance agreement between the city of Mariam and Johnson County Library Board.
In a second, Ms. Hands?
Hands here. I would like to second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Member Knapp.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp, or Caldwell.
Councilmember Knapp, or Caldwell, I'm sorry.
Aye. Very good. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda this evening is consider approval of professional services agreement with Open Cities for website services. Meredith?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and take you through a brief presentation about this proposal. Can you see my presentation?
Yes.
All right, great. And so this is a significant project, and so I wanted to go through kind of what our goals were with this project and what the process looks like moving forward. So our current website was originally designed in 2011. And the goal of websites at that period of time was to be a marketing piece. And it was a place to come and find out information, and it was a place to showcase our community. And it was a service directory. It would tell you, here's who to call if you have a question. And of course, at that time, it was designed for desktop. And so it was a place that you could come in and browse around to learn more. And that is not how we use the internet in 2020. And so the new goal for our website is to be our digital front door. And what I mean by that is we want self-serve functionality. We want you to be able to get on it 3:00 a.m. in your jammies and find what you need, renew your business license, contact the city, conduct, you know, pay your fee for something, and we want that to happen easily for those who come to our website. We also want to make sure we're catering to mobile users. And 53% of our website visits are mobile-based, and so we need a website that's designed with that in mind first. We want to make sure that we've integrated all of our existing platforms. And so we have a number of service providers that we utilize, CitizenServe, our core processing, software, et cetera, and we want you to be able to come to the Marion website as a one-stop shop and be able to seamlessly interact with all of those different platforms without feeling like you're leaving our website and going to a bunch of different places on the internet. Of course, we want it to be visually appealing, making sure that it upholds our Just Right brand is important. And then finally, we want to make sure that it's easy for staff to update and maintain. And we don't have a full-time webmaster. We have a number of people throughout our departments whose job it is to keep the website updated. And of course, it's led by our communications team, but that's just one of the many duties that they do. So ease of use from the staff side and the backend is really important. So I want to talk about why we decided, or why we're recommending Open Cities. So first of all, and one of the things we really liked about Open Cities is that they design using this digital services approach. And so making sure that you can do what you need to do on the website isn't just an afterthought. It's not a marketing piece first. And it is really designed to be a place where you can come and conduct business with the city. And then over the last two months, we've really seen the need for that increase and learned some ways that we can make that more seamless for our users along the way. Open Cities also uses a mobile-first design. And what that means is that they design the website so that it works on the smallest screen that people could be using on, and then it gets better and more expansive, or bigger and more expansive, depending on the screen size you're accessing. And our current website is just mobile-compatible, which means that it's designed for a desktop view, and then it just gets smaller and things rearranged as you go down in screen size. And so that's a big shift in philosophy for us. And like I said, we want to make sure that we can integrate all these platforms together, and Open Cities allows us to create that seamless interface between things and have front pages that are branded that all look like our website. And so it feels like you're still on the City of Marion website, no matter what service you're trying to conduct. And brand standards will be an important piece of this conversation as well. And then the place that Open Cities really stood out to us was in the backend, in the content management system. And so one of the things that happens when you don't have one full-time webmaster is you have a bunch of people who know a little bit about the website, having to keep it updated. And so having something that was built based off of templates using best practices is really important to us. And we want to make sure we can spend time focused on the content we're providing, not having to make sure we're designing a website that meets all of the the practices and regulations that you need to have online right now. And Open Cities gives us templates that makes that very easy for us to do. And we want to make sure our provider has regular CMS updates. And something that we don't love about our current provider is that they don't update things on the backend very regularly. That means that the backend today looks very similar to how it did in 2011, and it's a completely different world online. And it has not allowed us to grow and evolve the way that we would like to with our online presence. Accessibility is huge, not just from an ADA component, but also from a language component. And one of the things that Open Cities does, just built into the templates and the platform, is hold us to the highest level of accessibility standards and provides prompts for our staff members as they're updating the website of ways that we need to change things to make sure that it meets those requirements. It also utilizes Google Translate to make our site easily translatable. But if there are portions of the site that we need to make sure are grammatically correct, that we're providing a very sharp version in another language, and we can update and upload alternative text. And so we stay in control of that content and don't just rely on Google Translate to help with that. And then one of the things that really stood out to us is the ability to create content once and post everywhere throughout the site. And so right now, one of our big pain points is, for example, Turkey Creek Festival or any event that we have, we have to create an event webpage. Then we have news stories, then we have a calendar event. And all of those have to be built separately, using different pictures, and they don't link together. It creates a very disjointed experience for our users when they're just trying to get to the website to, you know, figure out what time the 5:00 K starts or something like that. And so allowing us to link that content together is really important and will help us on the backend, as well as help our visitors to the site as well. And so in the packet, I provided you with some examples of other websites that Open Cities works on. And as you might take from their name, they work primarily with local governments. And we did receive proposals from web companies that don't work with local government, but it was important to us to make sure we picked a company who understood our business and understood the services and information that we have to provide. And this is just a snapshot of the City of Miami's website, one of Open Cities' websites. And you can see in some other examples of ones are Lynnwood, Washington, Lake Worth, Colorado. They recently completed Fulton, Missouri's website in our local area. So we'll work with them to create our own look for the front page. You can see some pretty standard features here. We have these on our current website. And those will carry over to our updated homepage as well. And so let's talk about what comes next. So after a contract is approved, and we'll begin our data collection and analysis phase. And we've used some of the time over the last couple of months to start pulling this information together and doing page audits, taking a look at how people are using our site, what pages they're going to most often, et cetera. But we'll really dive into that and make sure that we're designing a site with data as the backbone. We'll also take a look at the content of our site and switch our perspective from us pushing out information to us providing services. And part of the work that Open Cities does with us is it takes our team to a digital services academy. And we're basically, it's sitting down and saying, okay, so you're here to apply for a dog license. What are the steps you take to go through the dog license? What is the information somebody who's, you know, getting a dog license needs to know as they walk through this process so they can have a very seamless and easy experience? And we're not used to talking that way on our website, and so they really come in and provide us with assistance, shifting our focus, meaning the customer where they are. And once we get the content and the design wrapped up for the site, an initial overview, we'll start bringing in focus groups and getting feedback, not only from people inside the organization, but outside the organization. And then we'll do some beta testing before we're ready to launch. And then one of the great things about the content management system on the backend is we can really stay focused on continual improvement and make a lot of the edits and adjustments that need to happen on the backend on our own. And so we are really in control of the experience and can pivot and adjust as needed. And so that's really kind of the why and what it will look like moving forward. Before you tonight is the contract for consideration. And so we selected Open Cities through an RFQ process. We had 13 proposals come in through that process. And the communications team did an initial cut of those down to three. And then we brought in other stakeholders from within the organization, from Parks and Rec, and Julie sat in on that, as well as Councilmember Neal to sit in on three interviews with his top three candidates. And then from that, we selected Open Cities as the one to move forward. So this is a three-year contract. And it's for year one, it's $44,400, which is under the $50,000 budget we had included for this year. And then in years two and three, it would be just under $15,000 for the annual fee. And then the timeline, if we kick-started it in the next month or so, it looks like we would be ready for a launch in early 2021. And that's one of the reasons we're bringing this forward to you all right now. And we had originally held this project as one we might delay because of COVID. And but really, like I said earlier, we've learned that the website is such an important way of how people interface with our city hall. And the timeline to get it done, that we wanted to get started on improving that experience in case we need to rely heavily on it again in the future. So that's all I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, and I think we can open this up questions, and then we do have some public comments which will include as we wrap our questions for any kind of vote. Ms. Hands, did I see you motioning? Do you might have a question?
I have several, but I won't ask all of them at one time, anyway. One of the things that I thought was interesting language was on page eight of the proposal where it talked about archiving. It just seems so strange to say daily and then eight week. The numbers didn't make sense to me.
Okay, I, you know, I will say that that's not something that we have talked extensively about.
Well, having grown up back in the days pre-internet, archiving is super-duper important.
Right.
And so I do try to look at that. So, yeah.
And I will say that we do have archives. So, I mean, when you're worried about like data, like the data backup that's happening, if you're worried about the content backup, and we do have to do that regularly just for open records and maintaining that. So we do have a system for that in place already.
Again, it was more because the language just seemed so strange to me. So if you can find out something about that.
Sure.
That would be helpful. And then the second question that I'm going to ask while I have the floor is it talked about us having a designated representative. So who is that?
It is Lauren Bunch. And she is our web administrator, among many other duties that she has, but she is the designate.
Okay, thank you.
Any, Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I also have a few questions. The, one of the, I first want to say that while I was, you know, I listened to the, the interviews and I did my own audit of the technology used. This particular vendor is not my first choice for a number of reasons that have to do with the technology and some of the underlying things that are there. I think that all of the objectives that you outlined are good. I believe that the other company that I favored would have met those and more. But specifically, moving on to this contract, what happens after year three? You mentioned that the fees for year one and year two and three, I didn't study it enough to determine what happens after year three. That's the first question.
Yeah, so after year three, we would do a contract extension with them. And so the annual fees are based off of population. Our population really isn't growing significantly, so I would expect that we'll stay pretty in line with what they are right now. And but just like we do right now with Civic Plus, we engage in one-year letters of the agreement to continue the service.
So you would anticipate the fees being similar to the $14,000 or $15,000 a year fee?
Correct.
Not, is there anything to preclude them from, you know, coming in and saying, hey, we're going to charge you $100,000 this year?
I, you know, there's not anything to preclude them from that. They do primarily work with local governments, though. And so I think they are more sensitive to that than maybe a private company might be. And if they were to come back with that fee increase, and we would certainly take a look at whether or not we wanted to continue our contract with them.
But since they are providing it as a service, then basically we would be shut down if they, we wouldn't have an option to take, you know, the development work and put it on another platform. At that time, we'd basically be starting over. That's my understanding of how this would work, but I assume that's right. Is that right?
And yeah, we'd be able to pull out some of our content. I mean, that's very similar to how it works with Civic Plus right now. They don't allow us to take from their site and pull it to our new site. And so we are recreating a majority of the content.
Yeah, another kind of question that I think is real relevant today is in the contract, section 5.8, which has to do with essentially privacy and data, you know, we're going to have data of citizens potentially in the system. And the language reads, it's under aggregate and anonymized data. Notwithstanding the provisions above of this Article 5, Open Cities may use, reproduce, sell, publicize, or otherwise exploit aggregate data in any way in its sole discretion. And then it defines aggregate data refers to customer data with the following removed, personally identifiable information and the names and addresses of customers and any of its users. You know, I'm in the IT business, software development, and I've spent, you know, over 15 years in web development as a major component of the last 10 years in particular, but I'm also very staunch privacy, have privacy concerns. I'm very uncomfortable with the over-broadness of this. Person, you know, remove your people's names and addresses. Every device is personally is really identifiable and can be tied to someone else. Potentially, we're going to have location data, you know, maybe facial recognition data, things like that, that I think are things that we have to be very careful about. And so I really feel like this is too overbroad. And I'm very concerned about it from that standpoint, in that particular section. Is it basically, if you read it, what it really says is that Open Cities may use or otherwise exploit in any way in its sole discretion, you know, any data that we have in the system and about our residents. And I think that there needs to be something to, to protect that a little bit more.
Any response, or do you have any other questions? I think Whitney has a question. Some of that David finished up.
Yeah, I will just add, I mean, David, I absolutely understand your concerns. The way this section is written, for better or worse, is exactly the same way it's written for our current website. And so this is the standard practice related to this. And we try, I think, the conversations we've had with Open Cities is we try to make it as anonymous and aggregate as possible. And but that is, that is.
One of the things that National League of Cities, the ITC Committee and Information Technology and Communications Committee is currently working on is this very issue, because we now are, while it may be standard practice and while the industry has been very, found it very lucrative to sell all kinds of data about people, certain kinds of data, like facial recognition and location data. location data are really quite sensitive. And that is an issue that National League of Cities thinks needs to be strengthened. And so I would hope that, I just don't see any reason why this needs to be, you know, this broad with, because it's, we potentially over time, new data that we get, new features that we have, it's really easy for that data to not, to slip out of our control under these provisions. So I don't know if you can renegotiate that particular portion, I think, I think that would be, and take that, make that not as open-ended, I think, that would make it a lot better.
Yeah, so I will just note that Luke Norris with Open Cities is on the call, too. And he just shared with me that this section has, doesn't have to do with the user data that's put in. That is all fully encrypted and it's our data. So this is just the aggregate data that's pulled from the site. And I think if the National League of Cities has a policy recommendation at some point related to this, and, you know, Open Cities certainly provides these services for a number of cities across the country, and it would be worth having a follow-up conversation with them in the future.
Mr. Neil, did you have anything else?
Like I said, that, I mean, that particular provision is problematic for me because I think it's just, it's good to know that it doesn't, that there's, there's some encrypted encryption involved in the storage of it. Again, you could pretty much get whatever you want out of it. You could make this language mean almost anything. So I'd certainly like to hear what the city attorney has to say about it.
Well, we just happen to have a city attorney on the list here.
So I was trying to go back and see, I think we did add some more protective language in the agreement about this. And I was just trying to go back to the red line. Unfortunately, what section were you looking at again, Councilman?
Five point eight is really broad. And I mean, if it doesn't, if customer excludes certain kinds of data, maybe that should be explicitly included in that, in that section.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was just recalling that I thought we put some safeguards in section five point four.
It would be helpful, I can turn on Luke Norris to answer this question directly.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Luke, I'm going to turn you on to talk.
Hi, good evening. Can you see me?
You cannot see, but you're just on audio.
Great. Well, thank you for the question. So yes, the intent here is our software as a service is focused on making sure that we can maintain the best possible user experience. So across that, what we oftentimes do is look at anonymous, de-aggregated and aggregated data around how residents interact with a site. So we're looking at traffic patterns, where people click, how long they stay on pages, how they search for information, the types of information that they search. That information is then used by our firm to make product enhancements so that the user experience for residents is constantly improved. As we focus on supporting hundreds of cities, we have great power in being able to look at those trends, not only on what happens in Miriam, but across hundreds of cities, so that we can make those aggregate functional enhancements to provide a continuously better user experience. Our forms tool called Open Forms is the tool that would collect and manage resident data. That data is fully encrypted. It's stored in Microsoft's Azure commercial hosting environment. It's encrypted at rest and in flight, and the only people that have any access to that data is the city and only accessible via an API key. So certainly if there are, is a desire to agree to more specific language, Councilmember Neil, that maybe clarifies who the customer is in this, and that we have no rights, use, or any ability to exploit resident data, certainly can call it out. We do not track any location-based data nor facial data. So I think putting in any of those caveats would be certainly agreeable to us. It's just about making sure that the underlying data could be used to continuously improve the product and provide your residents a better user experience.
Yeah, and I will note that customer data is specifically defined in section one point four. And so Luke, based on that explanation, Ryan, I don't know if you have any additions, but it feels like it might be wrapped up in those two comments.
No, I, you know, so anything that is personally identifiable is to be removed from the data. And also, section five point four, the agreement talks about protection of, of our, of the data that I think we're concerned about. And it provides that there to use commercially reasonable industry standard administrative, physical and technical safeguards for the protection of the security confidentiality and goes on. There are also provisions in here about the designation of information as confidential information, section eight point one, that I think provides some protections for the type of data we're talking about. And then section eight point two deals with the non-disclosure of that type of information. But if, if, you know, if there's something that we think is vague or ambiguous that relates to what you're concerned about, Councilmember Neil, then we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the need to, I understand the need to, you know, to do site testing and then to be, to understand how, how sites used. So I, but I also, but I don't see the need necessarily to sell it or otherwise exploit. I mean, otherwise exploit can mean anything. And I just, if you're going to have that broad of a, you know, a language, I do think that we should explicitly say something that refers to citizen data, user data that, that we can't do that. They can't do that with that, even though right now it would be more difficult to do. Because this agreement will probably stay in force for a long time. And as we add new technologies to the site over time, it's just better to have the document recognize, you know, out front, in my view, that those kinds of information, you know, are sensitive, knowing, you know, for example, location data, you know, license plate readers, things like that, have data that, you know, people's patterns can be inferred from, and someone would be interested in buying that. I just don't think that's, I think that we just have to increasingly become aware of privacy leakage, especially if we're, you know, we're a community and we're asking the citizens to entrust us with their information. So that, I would like to see a little bit added to five eight that's not as broad.
And just so I understand, are you worried about personalized information about individuals getting out?
Well, see, I mean, the problem is that it's kind of, in the industry, it's kind of a personal, personally identifiable information is a little bit of a misnomer. I mean, you know, combination, every device has essentially is digitally fingerprinted, that's available from a browser. Not saying that that's being used right now, but it's very easy to go, go out and tie a digital fingerprint of a device to, to an individual, should somebody want to do that. So if data is collected, you know, at the device level, which it will be, you know, most likely, then that's easily converted to personally identifiable information. And that it's done all the time. That's how, when you go to a website, they know what your preferences are. Yeah, I mean, it's, there are different ways of storing it, so you don't know exactly how it's being done. At least I don't. But I'm just saying that technology is, 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 is already there to really tie things to people, and it's, it's likely to evolve further. So why have so much, such a broad, broad language in here to start with? Why not recognize the intent is to keep the user data that we collect confidential, that our vendor can't sell it?
Sounds to me like that may be something that could be worked out.
I would feel a lot better if we did that. So, but anyway.
Ms. Edwards, you've had your hand up for a while. Did you have something you wanted to mention?
Yeah, I guess, I got D-Ball speaking. Sorry, sir.
You're next, Whitney.
Definitely, again, definitely not an IT guy. I think we all know that I'm a wood shop teacher. But the sentence in a paragraph, a statement made in there is not going to prevent an outside entity from stealing information from this website. That's why we have security systems. Is that correct? And again, I assume I'm right on that one. Okay. But, but the other thing, too, is, is that, that the company, and I assume the gentleman that spoke is the owner, director, CEO, whatever.
Yeah.
Has said that that is encrypted. Yeah, that's encrypted and protected. And then I think our city attorney has also said that there are lines of information within this contract that give us protection as well. So I guess my point is, and my question is, is that changing that verbiage going to make a difference? Is it something that this has to be delayed to change that verbiage? Could be my question.
I think the answer would probably be yes, if we're going to request a change in verbiage before it's approved. But, I mean, it's not going to be changed, obviously, on the fly. We have the intent of what we want changed, can be brought back, and that can be reviewed to see if the changes are acceptable, if that's the direction the council wants to take. Whitney, did you have something you wanted to mention?
Well, I was going to say what Luke said, actually, about using the data to improve customer experience and then front-end experience for website visitors. But also, I was going to ask, when I was doing some research, it looks like there, there's some experience in Europe. So obviously, the, the work has to be compliant with GDPR. Is that correct, Meredith?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're also on our own separate, like our own individual cloud server, right? Like, we're getting, I can see that. So we aren't sharing a box or anything with another city where we could potentially be impacted by something that happens in another city and that, could it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm still speaking.
Yeah.
Thank you. And my last question was, nope, Luke covered it. I think that's it. Sorry, I wrote things down like olden times with pens and paper this week. All right, go ahead.
Nope, continue.
Um, the support warranty or the support agreement, that flips immediately after we agree to launch the site, right? Or that we agree that the scope is complete for the build project and we move into that?
Correct.
Great. And then the three-year agreement, would we be then addressing that if we're anticipating launch early 2021? So, doing math.
It would be.
We'd be readdressing that in 2022 anyway, just for budgeting purposes, correct?
Yep, just for budgeting. And moving forward, it would be handled as just a maintenance contract, and it would be able to be extended. And at the staff level, we could all, I mean, you would see it in the budget, but
Right.
likely wouldn't come back to council because of that.
Great. And I think that's it. I was very glad to see them have double A accessibility as part of the standard scope. I think that's something that not a lot of people are paying attention to on a regular basis. So thank you guys for including that in what you're doing. And the prioritization system for the SLA. Are we bound by, no, that just made me think about the SLA for response time on the maintenance agreement. Are we bound by hours? Or is that just kind of like a flat fee and we, we use those things as appropriate?
Yes, it's a flat fee and we use them as appropriate.
Okay, so that comes out to be, just doing something really quick here. Twelve. Okay, so let's say, so typically, like, an agency might charge a hundred and fifty-ish, a hundred and fifty dollar hour range. So we would essentially be getting eight hours of support per month at a one hundred and fifty-hour rate, but that's unlimited within our best, you know, on our system usage. And so that's for citizens who are watching, who may not be familiar with web design and contracting and stuff like that. It's actually a really good deal for maintenance. I've worked places where we have not been as generous. Okay, that was, that was it for me, I think. Thank you, Meredith. And thank you to the team, including David, for doing research on this.
Let me ask a follow-up question really quick to Ryan. Ryan, in section eight point one, would we be able to utilize that section of the agreement to address Councilmember Neil's
Yeah, I think so. I think we could designate the information to be confidential. I also think that if we look at that section five point eight, if we just further define aggregate data to include the other types of ways that, you know, you can figure out who the user is, I think that that would get us there. And, you know, I can, I can negotiate that with Open Cities. And we can pass this tonight, subject to city attorney review and approval. And we can just, and I can work on that definition.
Ms. Hands, you had your hand up.
Yes, so one of my other questions was about excess usage. And it says what we're contracting for, but I'm just curious if this is giving us double capacity, triple capacity, or how much growth do we have?
Yeah, I'm not sure what times capacity it's giving us, but we are comfortably within that area. And so we have no concerns about those capacity limits based on our current website. And I don't want to just say a blanket, like, now versus then, because our website right now has a ton of stuff that has lived on there since 2011. And so I'm not sure the size of our new website once it's all said and done.
That's true. But I would also think that we've seen increased traffic during the last three months.
We have, we have, yeah.
I just want to be sure we have room to grow.
We do.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Cotto?
Yes, how much are we currently paying in annual maintenance fees for our current provider?
Yeah, we're paying about sixty-five hundred dollars a year, our current provider. And I will tell you that that does not buy us a lot, which is
No.
one of the reasons that we chose to not continue with them.
Okay, Ms., Mr. Shobbs?
I have two quick comments and then two quick questions. So I think our current website, the navigation, is pretty clunky. And looking at the samples that were provided, I feel like it won't be a huge upgrade. I'm sorry to say that. I also see that it seems like there's a heavy reliance on PDFs on this, on the other websites that you provided. And I don't feel like PDFs are very mobile-friendly. So those are two concerns I have. Then my question is, when reading the contract, there was a section that spoke about When reading the contract, there was a section that spoke about integrations and I was curious, how many integrations do we get with our contract for the $44,000 price? And my second question is, will we be using a third party for customizations? And if so, or if not, what is Open Cities hourly rate for doing customizations?
Sure, so and inner, so first of all, just based on when you're talking about the navigation within the site, that's something that's determined by us. And and one of the things that we have talked about from the beginning is reframing. It's not just like go to the community development site and you have to speak our language to be able to navigate through this app. So that's something that we're very cognizant of and will be addressing in our version of this site. And two PDF forms, and if you notice in the proposal, we have purchased their forms module. Because we agree we do not want PDF forms as whatever our future site looks like. That's what we have today and it's not something we want to continue with and moving forward. And when you look at integrations, and so yes, we, I'm not sure exactly how many integrations we're going to end up making. Of course, Citizen Service is a big one. Our court database is a big one. And it's about five and those are all easily handled within our contract. We are good to go there. Then what was your last comment? I'm sorry.
Will we be using a third party for customizations? And if not, what is Open Cities hourly rate for doing that for us?
And so our honestly, our goal is to do as much of the work within the template system as possible. And so they provide a pretty robust set of templates on the backend that should be able to address the majority of our needs. If we are looking for a specific service, we will likely find a company that specializes in that service and contract with them to do it versus building our own. So I mean, I'll just, we like, there is a request tracker built into this that, you know, we're going to be working through. But let's say we wanted to do something more robust, we might use C-click Fix instead. And so we, our goal is to not customize because we just simply don't have the staff capacity to maintain that in the long run. I'm on our backend.
Thank you.
Okay. Looking for hands, anyone who wants to speak? Mr. Neal.
Yeah, one one more question. I think in some of the examples that I saw from Open Cities products, probably one of the most unuser friendly portions of some of those sites was the essentially the services interface. Many, in some cases, you list essentially a record for each service in alphabetical order. And if you got 200 services, it takes a number of clicks to get down to the S's or whatever. I would really hope that we end up with something much more user friendly than that in in our website. Is is that something that Luke can address?
And I'll go ahead and address it too, because it's a conversation that we've had. And so much like when you get any template, it's only as good as the information that you're putting in. And so one of the things that we have talked about from our side is making sure portions of the website like that, that there are some cities that just dump all their information into that we are more thoughtful and purposeful about how that is built out. And so, yeah, that is an area and that I know David, you and I have talked about before, we talked about with our team. And that we want to make sure is really user friendly and not just an alphabetical list of things. And we want to make this very intuitive to use. And we have a couple of other areas within the templates that we will certainly be diving into as well. And to make sure that the outcome is exactly what we're looking for there.
Anyone else? Okay, so right now, the way I analyze this, we have an opportunity to request a motion in a second, but the motion would include. I'm sorry. Ms. Hands.
I thought we had some comments. Am I wrong?
No, I I think I messed up and it's on the next issue. I got my number, so we're good. And correct me on that if I'm if I'm wrong, but it's the next item. But anyway, if we do have a motion, it's going to have to include the caveat that additional work is done by our city attorney. Is that correct? Okay, well, if someone feels interested, let me know on a motion in a second. Ms. Hands.
Ms. Hands here. I move that the council approve a professional services agreement with Open Cities for website services with the attorney language to change not selling end user information.
This is Whitney Yadrich. I second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Neil.
Hi.
Councilmember Kate. Councilmember Silvers.
Hi.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Hi.
Councilmember Debold.
Hi.
Councilmember Hands.
Hi.
Councilmember Caldol.
Hi.
Councilmember Nat.
Hi.
Very good. Before we move to the next one, I want to, I want to share that I feel very fortunate to have a council that actually knows what it is they're talking about with regard to the topic. Most of that sort of my head, I sadly admit. But let's move on to number five. Which is the consider approval bid process for removal of the existing community center located at 5701 Merriam Drive. Chris, would you please provide staff updates on this item, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Chris Engel. At the end of the month, the Park and Rec Department will be vacating the existing community center 5701 Merriam Drive and moving into the brand new community center at Baver Park. At least that's what we're being told and assuming that it doesn't continue to rain every three days, I think we're we're good to go. So, but when they do, in anticipation of us vacating that facility several years ago, late 2018, the mayor and council appointed the steering committee to look at what the future of the 5701 site and or the building on that location could mean to the community in the years to come. A citizen committee, a citizen steering committee was appointed to figure out what those options were and conduct a public process. At the conclusion of that process last year, there was a recommendation of some additions to that site, some improvements, several components, some parks, historical feature, ban shell slash amphitheater, some on street improvements, angle parking and such that I believe most people are familiar with. And to save the 1911 structure, the original structure, if possible, meaning carve away the 1930s, 50s and 80s edition. Restoring essentially the parts that had been destroyed or at least modified during each expansion. Beginning late last year, 2019, staff worked with a engineering firm, structural analysis, a structural firm, MEP firm, mechanical, electrical plumbing to determine if it was possible, if it was feasible to carve away the 30s, 50s and 80s portion and relocate all of the utilities that are not currently in the 1911 structure to the 1911 structure if we were going to save it. They were able to to kind of tear into that facility and determine that that was a possibility with the price tag of about 4.7 to 5.2 million dollars. They identified to essentially just restore that that building and get the utilities in it. That they identified about $850,000 worth of potential historical tax credit, so that could reduce that price a little bit. That cost doesn't contemplate an end user. We still don't have a user for that facility. It doesn't contemplate tenant finish, meaning whatever someone would want that to be after we spent that money to save the building. They would clear, we would imagine they'd want to do something different with it. That cost, that's not included in that four to seven, 4.7 to 5.2 million dollars doesn't include ADA, life safety, things like that. So we would anticipate likely there would be an additional couple million dollars on top of that to save that building, make the improvements and get that building ready for some other use that has yet to be identified. In late May, city council had a conversation about all of that information, about the recommendation of the committee, about the cost to save the building and what the potential future or benefits of saving either the building and the site or just the site by itself. And at the conclusion of that work session, it was determined to move forward with the removal of the building due to the extraordinary cost and the lack of use. So staff went and crafted to 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 best reflect those conversations, staff created a bid document, a scope of work, if you will, of what we thought we heard in those conversations that we had about things that council members and the public would think were important in terms of what should be saved from that building and what should occur on that site and at the conclusion of that conversation and putting together that bid document that we put in your packet. It's been determined that the removal of the building, saving some of the stone, saving some of the historical signage, the cornerstone was was most reflective of the conversation. And we would recommend that we go out to bid on that. We could go out to bid in June, get that information back from vendors in July. And at that point in time, we could decide based on where we are financially COVID related revenues that we don't quite have a grasp of until the end of June, then we could decide at that point in time if we wanted to move forward. So what you have in front of you is a draft scope of work for with a bid that we believe reflects those conversations. We have money in the budget. Again, we would recommend that we not make a decision until July in terms of going forward with the actual work, but we would recommend we go out to bid now to figure out what those costs would be. I'm happy to answer any questions about that if I can.
Any questions? I can. Why don't I go ahead and we'll move into reading the public comments and then come back and see if there are questions after that. Julie, you want to dive into that?
Yes, we have three public comments tonight regarding this item. First one is from Billy Crone 6633 Wed Street. I read in the agenda for this meeting the draft of the bidding process for contractors to completely demolish all the buildings on the Irene B French Center grounds, erasing them and replacing them with a vacant lawn. It sure looks like it sure looks now like the plan for the Irene B French Community Center may box some of the stonework to be relocated at a future date. But at this point, will not preserve a single standing wall of the original 1911 structure. I think that is a significant mistake. As a member of the committee myself, I can attest this was not what the committee recommended after months of meetings and gathering public input. The committee's final recommendation contained preserve as much of the 1911 structure as possible. In fact, no fewer than five separate times. At no point during my time on the committee did I understand that to mean preserve it in pieces in a storage container. It pains my conscience that I have asked so many people of my neighbors to share their ideas with me and the committee. And it may just all get leveled to the ground in the end. It's not with the majority of citizens who took their time to give us input asked for. And stray so far from their guidance will discourage our neighbors from bothering to give us their input in the future. Full demolition is not what the project renderings have implied to the public thus far. With their gray box mark of the area of the 1911 building holding its place in space. I urge you during demolition not to knock down the 1911 buildings walls, not to request them to be knocked down. Instead, work around them. Leave them standing exactly where they have stood since before the city was formed. Tear down the less significant add-ons that have come along since 1911. Take off the 1911 schoolhouse sections roof and windows, remove the hazards. Fill the 1911 basement with soil. And if the 1911 walls crumble on their own as the additions around it are torn down, then clean up the debris, but leave what foundation walls remain standing, standing. Let them stay standing in the eternal Kansas sun as a cost effective monument to our past. A literal footprint on earth of where we have been. Cities that maintain their historic identity are among the most desirable to live in. Once a building has been demolished, replaced by soil and grass, it is gone forever for good. Is consider allowing the foundations of our past to remain. Please direct staff to update the draft before before you unite to preserve the surviving walls of the 1911 structure for future generations. Please don't be pressured into demolishing more than necessary, nor incurring its expense right this moment. Especially now with the financial fallout of COVID on our doorstep. Please do not demolish our history. Thank you. The next one is from Mark Leymandola. He did not provide an address. I recently learned the city council wants to spend over a half a million dollars to tear down the old community center. Why not just sell it instead and let the new owners deal with that? Maybe they won't want to tear it down. After all, there was no good reason to replace it. City is in very deep financial trouble. This is not news to those who have been watching money being wasted while revenue has plummeted. But it appears to be news to the city council, the mayor and staff. So let's look at reality for a moment. We lost our grocery store and that took a lot of other retail sales with it. This combined with the big downward turn trend in auto sales laid waste to the overly optimistic revenue projections upon which the unnecessary community center was justified financially. Now with the COVID-19 shutdown having created many permanent retail closings, case could be made that we'd be better off financially if we demolish the new community center rather than open it. I am not suggesting we do this. I am merely suggesting that for once the city council should consider economic reality because things are very bad financially for us. There have not been any meaningful budget cuts. And here's another big ticket spending proposal. No consideration of economic reality. Unlike wine and cheese, financial shortfalls don't get better with age, they get worse. Yes, I have a significant background in economics and finance, but I'm not asking you to consider the messenger. I am asking you to consider consider the message. And the message is the longer you wait to take meaningful action on our financial crisis, the more painful getting through it will be. Let's stop pretending that things will be okay by simply wishing them to be that way. They won't. One solution that residents in North Merriam, not where I live, are complaining about is the recent resumption of the old harass and fine quotations policy that diminishes the quality of life for residents. While this will definitely raise money, the money raised is not enough to offset bad decisions made so far, and it's not good public policy. The actual solution will involve a complete shutdown of past behavior such as wasting money on art and engaging in new behavior such as determining whether a given expenditure is actually needed. Failure to put forth a solution means having a solution forced on us. It will consist of massive layoffs for city employees and a reduction in services to residents even though we lack services that residents of similar sized cities enjoy. even though we lack services that residents of similar sized cities enjoy. And it will get worse from getting a grocery store or two in the city is a very high priority because that will bring other shopping and thus other sales tax revenue. You might be able to sell still time for $500 and eliminate an ice sore. There is other junk that could be auctioned off instead of harassing people to raise them. Each of you on the council should already know these things. Yet you have not acted as if you were aware of them at all. You are our neighbors and this is your city too. Stand up for it. Merriam will never be just right again, but we don't have to keep making it go so badly wrong. You can start us on the path to recovery today. You just need to decide to do it. Thank you, Mark Laymandola. Merriam resident who can do the math is asking you to do it too. Then our last comment is from Stacy Shaveta. 5541 Goodman Street. As the appointed chair of the 5701 steering committee, I have been following the progress of the discussion very closely. A work session last month, council decided it was the best financial decision to move forward with demolishing the buildings that currently make up the Irene B French Community Center. Throughout the work of our committee last year, we knew that saving the 1911 building might be a financial long shot. I advocated for showing it in all of our renderings from Confluence as a ghosted figure. In my eyes, the public knew that it might not be feasible to keep any of the buildings. There were some common themes in our goals that we outlined as a committee through our first couple of meetings. Largely focused on not wasting money and not selling the property. I believe that demolishing the building instead of wasting money even mothballing costs a great amount of money is the best decision.
Thank you.
Option goes through tonight to move forward with the demolition of the buildings. I would love the opportunity to reconvene the steering committee and massage and rethink the plan for the site moving forward.
There you go.
Challenge us to come up with the funding to make our vision come to life. Thank you. List of goals from the report to city council was make an area for community gathering, increase quality of life for residents, no burden for taxpayers, create tax revenue and business downtown, demolish buildings, education component, downtown bring more people, not wasting more money, not selling property, keeping some history, take advantage of its placement site as part of downtown core, identify how civic programs can interact with and support local business, economic development, restaurant slash tourism, historic preservation, remembrance, not worry about short-term costs, integrate use of land with farmer's market, do something that provides a strong sense of community, identify and kickstart downtown redevelopment by small business stakeholders. Make a decision that provides for future if flood control happens. Add a list for downtown development, bring more people downtown permanently and temporarily, avoid wasting money, historic preservation and active future use.
Okay. Any member of the council wish to ask a question, Mr. DeBo?
Scott DeBolt speaking. Chris, I've got a question for you, I think. In the wording on number 22, it said keeping 45 cubic feet of material of the existing, how big are those blocks, do we know?
They, they they vary in size, I mean, there, there are some that are smaller than other ones. We, we picked that number because we felt like if we were going to reuse that to re-clad something like an amphitheater or theater, that stone, that would be enough stone to cover, say, the base of an amphitheater. But that was just a number that we, I mean, we, we put some thought into it, but we think that we could, we could carve out probably the space on the north wall and we would be able to pull all of that rock and we'd be able to keep it. Some of it will get destroyed as they're trying to remove it because it's old rock. But we had to, we felt like we needed to pick some sort of number as opposed to go out and just kind of chalk some rocks and say, do this one, this one, and this one. Because what we believe they'll do is go in and saw cut all the way around a whole wall and then they'll be able to remove that. So that, that number, if, if council liked that to be more, we can make it more. That was just what we felt where we could get a nice big section of rock for reuse.
Well, my, my thought was, again, first of all, where the number came from, but the, the rendering shows some sort of building. It's a ghost building right now. But if we saved enough of that material, couldn't that be the base foundation for a pavilion? Preserving that, not necessarily the existing foundation, as Mr. Crone was talking about, but recreating that foundation with that base for the pavilion that could be, you know, in that exact same spot. So if we saved more, we might be able to do that. I'm thinking, I'm throwing thoughts out. Wanted everybody to know kind of what I was thinking as far as that was concerned. You know, you know, a two or three foot tall wall that had posts up to the actual roof of the pavilion, those kinds of things that might be able to preserve a foundation, a thought.
That, that was, that was, that was our exact thought. Our thought was that we, well, we don't have an exact reuse for it. We felt like we wanted to keep enough of it that we would have some options, whether that's a pavilion, whether that's the base of a stage, whether that's, whether, whether it gets integrated as, as seating within a historical, you know, there's a, there's a historical component that's recommended in, in one of those options.
Yes.
Those could be used as seating, but we wanted to keep enough that we would have options and we felt like that was, that was a good amount, but I, without really a final use, I couldn't tell you what the correct amount is.
If we saved too much, let's say, let's say we saved too much and we don't need it for whatever our, our purpose is going to be in the future. We could probably find something else to do with it. So I guess what kind of financial issues would there be for storage? Those kinds of things, knowing, you know, this could be four, five, however many years down the road. What does that look like?
Yeah, for, for storage, we'll just store it at Public Works. I mean, so, so whether it's stored, whether it's on pallets, whether it's in a conics box, whether it's somewhere, I mean, it's stone. It's been sitting out the elephant, in the elements for a hundred years. So I mean, sitting for another year to five years isn't going to hurt it any. So storage will occur at Public Works that we won't incur any cost for that. The only cost would be depending on how much of it we want to save. You know, then they have to go in with a scalpel as a, I say a scalpel as opposed to a cleaver and they have to carve out enough of it that, that we, that they can hit the number that we give them. We, we can pay, if, if, if council wants that to be 50 or 90 or save every stone in there, we can. It will affect cost. I don't know how it will affect cost though, but absolutely if that doesn't feel like that's a bigger number, we can make that a bigger number.
Yeah, I guess that was my only thought is, is 45 cubic feet enough? My only thought, I wanted to see what anybody else had to say. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Ms. Edred.
Missed the depth calculation on that, just so I could draw out 45 cubic feet in my head too.
Really, we just projected it from the depth is, the, the depth, yeah, the depth was not included.
It is what it is. Do this much.
It's how, however, however deep that stone is, I mean, we, we're not really sure how uniform the depth of it is. There's walls on the inside. We didn't go through that. We just pretty much said, what do we think 45 cubic? And can we get a section of it where, where it would be easy for them to pull it out? You know, which in our mind, that would be on one contiguous wall if possible, which it doesn't have to be. We can add to that. It's just, the, the greater the complexity, the more the assumption the cost will go up. We could be wrong.
Yeah.
Probably. But, but again, we can, we can pick a much bigger number if that's preferred.
I'm just, I was just trying to draw it out in my head, like the, cut to the gif of like the numbers floating around my head, but no, thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I, I just was wondering if you could refresh me on a couple of numbers because I don't have the presentation in the work session. But the building as it stands right now, what is the appraised value of Johnson County for, for the, for the building?
Let me dig that up. The
It's two million something, I think.
The appraisal per the county was 2.5, 2, 2,510,850. The, the improvements, the, the improvements on the site being the building's about 1.9 million. And they're saying that the, the, the site is worth about 560,000.
Okay. A, a couple of comments and questions and I'll be, I'll try to be brief. I just, as I stated in the work session, I don't think it's the appropriate time to make that level of a decision about what to do with this facility right now in the middle of an unknown economic and fiscal situation. I think you also said the cost of maintaining the utilities were somewhere in the 36, 38,000 a, a year level. So, you know, what we're talking about essentially there, while there was a decision and informally made, there wasn't a vote taken, number one, I think there needs to be a, a vote, which I understand is to be in June or July, whatever you just said. To actually move forward with a bid, but I just have a, a sense that this is a decision that will surprise a lot of residents. They, you know, we had this process and I don't believe that demolishing the building and having a mowed grass field for the next five years was really on anybody's list of, of things that they expected us to do. So, you know, I, I'm probably going to be the only one, but I'm going to vote against this idea at this time. I don't necessarily think that, I mean, I don't know what the answer is. The cost that you guys have put forward tonight was actually for saving the building envelope in its entirety and, 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 and installing new utility or new mechanical infrastructure, I understand. And was it, is it correct that there is not an option to save some of the walls and leave some of the walls standing? Or that was looked at what the cost would be for that? Have, have we done that?
Not in depth during the process that we just went through with the engineers. We asked them about that. And what they shared is that it would probably cost about the same amount of money because the couple of reasons. One, you'd have to, to, you'd still want to remove the 30s, 50s, 80s portion. If you're going to save the 1911, again, I keep using it, but you're using a scalpel and not a cleaver as you get closer to that building. Then to remove the interior of the building, one, we don't know if structurally those walls will stand on their own. But in order to remove the roof, all of the floors in the basement, you're working from the top down to remove all of that. Then you're looking at either some crossbeams, some I-beams, some sort of structural support to hold that building up quite possibly. Because, well, it might seem like a good idea and nostalgic and hey, you can drive by and look at it. There's nothing that says that that's not going to fall on somebody. There's nothing that says you can see inside that building from the outside, despite the fact we would have, I would assume, just open doors that go in there. If you just have the shell up. But to answer your question, they did not run a thorough cost analysis, but they said that it would cost about the same amount of money because of all the things I mentioned.
Okay. Well, I, I think that was more or less the, you know, what I, what I thought we were going to, you know, look at as far as the cost, but beside, just, just in general, I just, I, I am very concerned about the fact that I don't believe that we really done. This particular plan has really not been vetted in the community, wasn't really vetted in the 5701 committee. And I don't think that a lot of people are going to be following what we're doing here tonight. And so I just feel like it would be better to defer this decision a little bit down the road, get some more public input. Because I, I just don't think that people driving down Merriam Drive are going to like looking at an empty field there when they've been used to looking at a reasonably interesting building along there. So I just, that's, that's my opinion and, you know, it's probably not going to be a popular one, but I didn't want to say it.
Ms. Hands and then Ms. Edred afterwards. Ms. Hands, go ahead.
Yes, hands here. And I, I think what we're voting on tonight is to get a bid. We're not going to say, we're not pulling the plug to go ahead and tear it down right now. We have to know what it's going to cost. And so I definitely support with going ahead and, and getting a bid for the demolition.
Ms. Edred. On mute.
First time we've since we've been doing this. My only question was just because we have a bid, it doesn't mean we have to act on it, right?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? I'm sure, Ms. Pay.
This is Bob. Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate again, like what Chris had, Whitney had said. My understanding is I, you know, we don't have to go forward. I mean, this vote tonight, which I'm in favor of obviously moving forward with getting the bids is to give us a better idea as to how much money it's going to cost, should we demolish the whole building? And we, we may find out as Mr. Neal had expressed earlier with the COVID, that we, it may not be a good time for us to, you know, to have to spend that money. But if, you know, we don't know that until we find out what the bid comes back as. And then it might give us more time also to, to vet whether or not other options or ideas that maybe we can still do with the, the walls or how, how much more block we want to save. I think it's been brought up this evening. I think that's a good thing to, to address and to look at as well too, is that when it comes out of that. But having said all that, I don't think anything precludes us going out tonight, or at least authorizing tonight for staff to at least get the bids. And then it gives us more time to figure out what are we really going to do with it and when are we going to do it?
Mr. Engel, we could probably ask for bid alternates on the amount of 45, have a bid alternate of 60.
Absolutely.
Got an idea of, well, okay, if it's not much more, we'll move it up. If it is a lot more, we won't, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I believe, I, I think we have a, if it's not listed, I think we have one or two bid alternates that we considered. See if there's, see if it's in there. To answer your question, yes, we, we can, we can absolutely say, hey, we want 45 to be the baseline. If we wanted another 45, what would that be? And they would come out and they'd look at it, they'd analyze it, they'd be able to say, well, hey, we could get you another 20, but then you hit a corner or, you know, there are some, there's some different stone that's in there where they filled some windows. That's kind of the difficult part is that we don't exactly know the thickness and what's behind some of that rock. But again, yeah, we can absolutely, we can add that up at some different tiers and say 45 is the baseline. Tell us what it would cost for 60 and for 80.
Ms. Caldwell, do you have your hand up?
Yes, this is Chris Caldwell. And, you know, I fully support going out and getting the bids. I think it's very important that we're very clear in what our intentions are. And I believe our intentions are to tear the building down and plant grass because the economics of another building that we really don't need and have no purpose for, just tell us we, we don't, it's all we can do. You know, to, to, to try to sell $5 million for a building that then needs another $5 million to be used, for which we have no purpose, makes absolutely no sense to me. So if there is a group of citizens out there that think we need to save that building and they want to rally around and have a grassroots effort and they can come up with a purpose for the building and a way to fund it, now is the time for them to rally. Because while we're getting bids, they can come up with a purpose and they can figure out how to pay for it. And, and they can put together a pitch to the, to the voters. And, you know, maybe we'll have And, and they can put together a pitch to the, to the voters and, you know, maybe we'll have a nice, pretty building there. I seriously doubt it, but we'll see where we go.
One of the challenges that I charged the committee with was to look for all the things you just mentioned. What other uses could be, could be considered, uh, what should be done? And they, they went through a number of different iterations, uh, didn't find anything that was very useful, I don't think. My concluding comment on this is that, once again, the people I've talked to are under the understanding that we built a new community center and a new swimming pool because we were either going to sell the old property or we're going to tear it down. That's what the voters think that, that we did, we are going to do. There's no implication that we, oh, well, we're done with the new community center, we're going to take the old community center and rehab it into something else and spend millions of dollars for it. If that had been part of the original vote, they would have voted it down. Uh, so to me, the fact that we're talking about the possibility of doing that now is an injustice to the voters, not, not the opposite. But again, I think we've talked enough about this. This is all about whether or not to go forward with the bid. Mr. Neill, did you have one final comment? You're on mute, sir.
Yes, I, I, you know, I agree with what you just said. But I also think that, uh, once you've, uh, uh, once we've torn the building down, which I know, understand that's not what this vote is tonight. We, you can't go back. And, uh, the option that, uh, has not been really, uh, you, you mentioned it was possibly sell the building. And, um, for some reason that, uh, uh, is, i- i- it doesn't seem to be of interest to anybody. We, we have to keep this property for some reason. But I, uh, I'm going to change my, what I said before, and I will vote for this bid. Because I do believe that we, we need to know how much it would cost. And so, um, but I, I think that, uh, we should have a, a, a more robust discussion in front of the public about whether or not to actually pull the trigger and demolish the building.
Very good, Mr. Debold.
Real quick, one of the things that the citizens did say was that we wanted to retain ownership of that property. That was stated by the people.
One other thing too, just again in closing it, um, when, when we do come back for the bid, and we'll know how much it's going to cost us to tear it down. I'd like for, uh, there to be a more definitive, uh, study. It could be informal among staff and whoever is available on what it's going to cost us to keep that building standing with, uh, doing nothing to it, what it's going to cost us monthly to keep that thing just standing there and, and boarded up and waiting for years or whatever as we decide what we're going to do with it. Because, uh, there, there's a lot of, uh, problems with that. We've talked about them in the past. It's not the thing just sits there and doesn't eat anything. It's going to cost us thousands of dollars for it to just sit there. That's one of the things that we need to calculate in our decision on what we're going to do with it going forward. So that being said, uh, I will entertain a motion and second, uh, if anyone has an interest. I can't see her, Bob.
Yeah, uh, Bob Pay, but I would move that the council authorize staff to solicit bids for the demolition of the 5701 Merriam Drive building.
And a motion of second, Chris Hands.
And yes, I second the motion.
Have a motion of second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Pay.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrak.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Neff. Councilmember Neal. I think you're on mute, sorry.
Under the, the caveat that we're going to follow it with a, with a vote, uh, later about actually doing it. I think there's value in, uh, understanding what the cost would be. And, uh, also specifically the bid does say that it is a, uh, city sole discretion to award the project or not award the project. Um, under those terms, I, I vote aye to get a bid and, uh, I would like that in the record.
Motion passes. Okay, let's go to move to consider approval, uh, of some changes in the employee handbook. Meredith, would you like to give us an update on that?
Yes, um, so there is a policy in the employee handbook, policy 6.02, that discusses the fringe benefits that we offer our employees. In the past, we have offered discounted, um, rates to the community center and pool. So before you tonight is an updated version of that policy. And that's, that's discounted rates for both employees and retirees. And these rates will be looked at annually during our open enrollment process as part of the benefits package. And, and in order for employees to receive them after, um, their first year, they have to participate in our health and wellness incentive program. They have to complete, you know, a, a series of options like, um, walk a mile, come to the safety fair, go to the doctor, um, that sort of stuff. So it becomes, um, a big incentive as part of that program. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions? Chris, I'm sorry.
Hands here. I did have one constituent talk to me about the loss of free access for retirees. Was this something that we had discussed before? You just need to refresh my memory, thank you.
Uh, yeah, so we offer, um, free, uh, right now, the way things are is if you're an employer or retiree, you can get free, a free membership, um, to our current community center, but you have to pay a $5 fee to actually get the card, like the membership card. And, and so with this new program, if they are, um, if the retiree or if the employee is looking to get a, an individual membership, um, then it is, it's just free. So we maintain that benefit moving forward and we're not doing the $5 for the card anymore. That wasn't really necessary to carry for. So they will still be able to get an individual free membership, um, to the new community center. And then there's a buy-up option if they want to add someone else in their household.
When it says discounted, that's what the discount is, is it free?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the 2020 discount, you can, there's a rate table included, um, in your packet. The 2020 discount, um, it's basically that we are discounting the membership, the amount of an adult membership. So, um, it's an adult membership would be, uh, zero. And then if a senior household, it'd be $530 minus the $400 of a adult membership. So the employer retiree would be, you know, they'd pay $130, um, et cetera. So, uh, yeah, we've set the discount that way, but there are some free levels.
Okay, and I, I have one more. The headings that are on this table, I did not understand what ER and EE mean.
Uh, employer and employee. I apologize, those are, are, are common acronyms and I'm sorry, I did not clarify those for you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion and second. First hand.
Hands here, and I move that the council approve a resolution amending section 6.02 of the employee handbook.
Bob, second.
This is Bob Pay, but I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Member Silver's.
Before I put my vote in, I would like to just state for the record that, um, I will be donating an equal amount to my free membership to the charter membership, um, program, the scholarship. So, um, someone else can also benefit from it. So with that said, um, I will vote yes.
Councilmember Yadrak.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Neff. Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pay.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Very good. Next items, community center update. Yeah, Meredith.
Me again. I'm going to share, um, my screen with you tonight to take you through this. Can you see my presentation?
Yep.
All right. Uh, great, so, um, as we have done for the last couple of years, it is the first meeting of the month. So this will be available on the website tomorrow. And we are nearing the end of our project schedule. The building is, um, actually scheduled to open this month. So we are getting, uh, very close to that date. And, and before I jump into some more complex details that I want to discuss tonight, I'll just hit high level. We continue to be within budget, um, for this project, so all as well in that area. And, all right, so I want to talk about some of the impacts that COVID-19 has had on this project. And of course, it is a public health crisis. And, um, so we are beginning to pre- prepare for the updated safety and cleaning protocols that will need to be implemented once we open. And then later in this presentation, we're going to have a conversation about when the pool can open. And as I have mentioned in the past, we also have supply chain delays that we're working through. One of the significant ones that continues to be an issue is that the indoor pool tile, um, has not arrived on site yet. It has not been, it was not manufactured before the plant shut down in March. And then they just reopened at the beginning of June. And so that will be a delay that we're going to need to discuss further. Our art projects, um, will be here late. They should be here in July, but their, uh, manufacturing was also shut down for those. And we'll have various furniture pieces throughout the building that will be delayed. And then, um, like minor detail, but, uh, still out there is the fitness area fans are delayed as well too. The ones from the ceiling, we'll make sure it's cool for those of them. And the other thing that I have discussed with you all is that we've had to do some resequencing of the construction because of COVID-19 and the supply chain delays, um, that we experienced early on. And so all of these things combined have, um, led to an updated opening schedule, which we're going to cover tonight. So here is the updated timeline. And I'm going to start, we're in the middle of this already, so I'm just going to take you through both, um, kind of back at house stuff as well as when the public gets to come into the building. So we have already started orientating our part-time and seasonal employees. This week, um, we began taking deliveries at the site. And we are, uh, you know, it's been raining quite a bit, so we're not quite where we want to be on concrete, um, pores in the area. But if you've been around here lately, you've noticed that they, um, have shut off parts of IKEA away to pour the outdoor pool deck. And there are portions of the front drive and plaza area that have been poured. Hopefully we'll get those wrapped up ASAP so we have a clear path into the building. Next week, our goal is to be through all of our life safety inspections so we can begin moving, um, into the building, moving things out of IBFCC. And then the week of June 22nd, and we'll be actually in the building, I'm doing staff training and we will have facility tours that are available to the public and details about those will be posted on the website. Uh, June 28th, I want you to mark your calendars for this. We will have a small flag lowering ceremony at the old community center as a, um, kind of mark of its goodbye. And we are engaging one of the Boy Scout troops in town to help us with that. And this isn't designed, um, to be a, a huge event, but we want to make sure that we properly acknowledge the time that we've spent in that building and do something to mark the occasion of moving out. And then on June 29th, that's the day that our soft opening week begins for charter members. And that morning, we will have a flag raising ceremony at the new community center, which I will send out invitations on few all to attend. And the week of June 29th will be a soft opening week, like I mentioned. So that means the building won't be open, um, every hour that it would normally be open, but there will be certain portions of the building open at certain times for charter members to come experience. And then on July 4th, our goal is to open, um, the building to the public. And we'll talk about pools in a second, but, um, high level, the indoor pool will not be done in time for that. And so we're targeting a Labor Day open for the indoor pool. And, and again, just mark your, be sure you mark your calendars for the 28th and 29th. We'd love to have all you there and I'll send out details about times for that. And, all right, so, um, let's talk about the indoor pool opening considerations. Like I've mentioned, there's a delay on the pool tile. And so this feature will be closed when the building opens. And we will have to come back in, um, and work around the open building in order to complete it. And once we get the tile from the manufacturer, it takes about six to eight more weeks to actually get it in and get that space wrapped up. So it will be closed to the public until approximately Labor Day. And our goal is to be able to open it for Labor Day weekends and have people experience both the indoor and the outdoor pool space over that holiday weekend. And, a- and then of course, the one that will be done when the building is open is the outdoor pool. And this is where the public health situation is impacting things. And so as you know, a number of our neighbors have not, uh, opened their pools, their outdoor pools for the season. The main difference for us is that our pool will have water in it. And we have to open it, fill it, um, and balance it in order, um, to get through the construction process. So we will have a pool with water available. And so we're trying to balance having that space available with the public health of both our staff and the residents. And also, sorry, that's all right, thank you, Chris here.
I'll be, I'll be there.
Thank you. Um, to get the, uh, both the public health of our staff and the residents coming. And you can see here in phase three, um, the phase we're in right now for the state of Kansas. And there are quite a few guidelines that exist for opening the pool. Um, not only is PPE encouraged, but there's also capacity limitations and physical distancing guidelines and that they're recommending as well. And, y- you know, when you think about public health, you think about opening a building for the new time, for the first time. That's not necessarily, um, the environment that we want to make a great first impression of our outdoor pool space. Um, and so all those things combined, our recommendation is to wait to open the outdoor pool until the phase out, um, portion of the state's reopening plan. Um, and there will be no guidelines for the pools during that, they'd be able to, to open and operate as usual. And if things continue to move as they're scheduled right now, um, through the phase out plan at the state level, potentially we could be in that plan when the, um, building opens. So that could align nicely, but, you know, we, we're not sure how we'll move through that over the month of June. And, and then our lifeguards are already hired and they will be trained. And, and so when we get to that phase out portion, um, they will be ready to open the pool. So I think, um, opening the outdoor pool on this timeline really positions us to get the best, uh, to make the best of a number of situations. So I think tonight, um, in respect to opening the outdoor pool, we're just looking from a nod for council that they're in agreement on this timeline moving forward. So we can circle back around to this at the end of the presentation. And of course, not having the pools open, um, create some questions about how memberships, um, work. So I want to take you through the proposal, um, to handle those as well. So we have two different types of memberships, um, that we are currently selling, the versus the charter, um, memberships. And those are annual memberships. It's a lump sum paid in full when you purchase it. And then the other ones are monthly memberships. So that is a monthly fee that's renewable, um, month after month. So, um, starting with charter memberships, our proposal is that we extend, um, the sale of those through Labor Day when the indoor pool would potentially open. And that any annual membership purchased between now and then would be a charter membership. And what this means is charter members would have access to the building beginning June 29th or whenever they purchase their charter membership. Um, but the actual clock on their membership, meaning the 12-month annual membership, would not begin until, um, Labor Day or whenever the indoor pool opens to the public. So they could get some extra months, um, thrown into that membership as a perk, um, that we weren't, weren't offering before. So that could be, um, kind of a nice middle ground for not having all of our features open. And for monthly memberships, for those folks who don't want to, uh, buy an annual membership in a lump sum, um, you can purchase those now and. you can purchase those now, and they would be, the timeline on your monthly membership would begin on July 4th, the day that the building opens to the public. And but again, to account for not all amenities being open, these would be discounted 50% for the months of July and August, or until whenever the indoor pool opens to the public. So that would essentially get us to a buy-one-get-one-free situation for the summer months, which I think is a great deal as well. We do have an option that council approved to sell summer-only memberships, but based on the proposed discounts from charter and monthly memberships, our recommendation is to not offer the summer-only memberships this year. If people just want a summer-only membership, we can set up an expiration date on their monthly membership when they buy it, so they could just have a monthly membership for July and August, and then it could expire in September. That will be easy for us to do. And then the other piece that we've talked to you all about before is, since all of the other pools in the area are closed, we are concerned about having an influx of people trying to get to our outdoor pool if it's the only one open. And so our recommendation is that day passes are only available to Marion residents to purchase through Labor Day. So non-residents could still join the community center. They could have an annual membership, a monthly membership, but they would have to be a member of the community center in order to access the amenities. They wouldn't just be able to purchase a day pass. And I want to give you just kind of a high-level overview of what those rates might look like. So the pink columns are the rates that would apply with the discount. So you can just see, kind of starting like resident household. If someone wanted to do a resident household monthly membership, it would cost them $30 a month, or they could do for July and August with this discount, or they could buy it for $540 annually. And so you can see down the line what those 50% off amounts would look like for the monthly membership. And I will note that the monthly, annual, and charter rates have already been approved by council, and so we are just seeking your nod of approval that we could offer this discount under these terms for, for the summer. And so that's all I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about any of this. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, but I will pull it back up if we need to refer to the presentation.
Any questions? Ms. Hands.
Um, I understand following the guidelines. I, I am just super uncomfortable about opening the outdoor pool even on a limited basis. And we would have a number of people who could be in, even though people, we have day passes available, so it's first come, first served. Is that right?
Yeah, so with our recommendation to not open the outdoor pool until phase-out, which is the last phase of the Kansas reopening plan, when all the restrictions have been lifted, then we would not have any public health capacity guidelines related to COVID imposed on the pool. However, we still do have like, like bather load, I mean, capacity for the pool that we would have to implement, and so staff would be monitoring those. And so on a busy day, we could potentially get to like a one-in-one-out situation, but we'll have to monitor that.
And the, the bather load, we will have all the time, right?
Yeah.
Related to COVID.
No, it's not related to COVID.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, but no, we don't, it makes us nervous as well to have to enforce distancing guidelines within a pool space. And so that is our recommendation to hold off until those restrictions have been lifted, especially because our lifeguards are high school students primarily, and it's, it's really hard. Once you get in a pool, it feels easy to be right up next to somebody. And so we want it to be an enjoyable experience for everybody there once we open.
And the date, I think, on the guideline was the 28th, 29th?
It's two weeks from today, so I think it's the 20, if we move through it in two weeks. I mean, that is, who knows what that will look like.
Everything, everything is who knows.
Yeah.
Jason, do you have a question?
Yeah, I would just like to congratulate staff for pulling together a completely new plan for the community center because of what's going on right now. I know that was probably not an easy process, especially figuring out the finances, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
I agree. Any other questions?
I second that, too. Awesome job.
And you're needing, you're needing a head nod or a thumbs up or something, right?
Yeah, I think just a thumbs up. Yeah, thanks, Bruce. Yeah, just, we are going to move forward with this unless there's direction from council to not.
All right.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The monthly finance report of the report was included in your packet. I think there is certain acknowledgements that were planned, but just brief. Mr. Ringo, are you going to do that, or do you want to?
Yeah, just quickly, yeah, just quickly to say that this reflects several months ago. So we started off the year pretty well. I think just a quick note that this is 1% less than our 2020 budget at this point in time of the year, so we were actually doing pretty well before COVID hit. And it's 24%, in sales tax figures, it's 24% over 2019. So we really did start the year well, so it's actually good news, because we clearly know that we are not in the midst of good news right now. But knowing that we were above where we were last year, every one of those pennies and dollars is going to matter as we start to really get a grasp over what April and May look like. So just wanted to say that, well, yes, we are in the midst of COVID, and we are going to feel some pain. Prior to the pain, we were actually doing pretty well, so hopefully that helps us carry, carry these bad days forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if there's anything specific.
I gather from what you just said that we're not in a deep financial crisis. Is that correct?
I am not of the opinion that we are. I mean, we, we're, we're going to take a haircut, but, but we're not a, I, I'm not overly concerned at this point right now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any other questions about finance report? Okay. Uh, all right, great. I think we're ready to move into community development, public work, CIP. First issue has to do with final payment to Phoenix Concrete. Jim, are you out there somewhere?
Yeah, I'm bringing him over as a panelist right now.
Okay, you got me?
Be right back.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This evening, I'm seeking approval for the final payment to Phoenix Concrete for 2019 sidewalk infill project in the amount of $22,090.24. They finally completed all the construction for this project. The only issues we had was the sod we were waiting them to complete this year. With this final payment, the total construction expenditure will be $301,577.86. We are $12,184.56 over the original contract, construction contract. However, we are under the original budget amount for this program. The contract overrun is due to actual place quantities being more than the planned quantities, and I have kind of an explanation of some of those. One of them is several residents requested the sidewalk to be placed back a curve, and that eliminated the two-foot green space that we put in there. And when we do that, we increase our sidewalk width from four feet to five feet, so that increased our square yards of concrete. Due to the topography of several properties and to improve the finished slopes of the front yards, some of the properties, we placed curbs on the back of sidewalks. While we're out there doing driveway approaches, staff identified and replaced substandard curb. Didn't make sense to put a new curb in front of a driveway next to a bad spot, so we included those areas when we were there, along with some ADA ramp locations. And then finally, there's several driveway approaches and additional driveway, we made them a little bit longer to meet a joint, so it looked better and had a better transition from the driveway to the sidewalk for the residents. Once we, if you approve this final payment, that begins our two-year maintenance period for this project. I have any, any questions? I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Mr. Caudill?
Yeah, it's related about the program. Didn't we approve this in the consent agenda?
You, you approved the 2020, our infill since the 2019.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other, any other questions, comments? Not all entertained and motion in a second. Bob?
This is Bob Pape. Mayor, I'd moved that the council authorized final payment to Phoenix Concrete in the amount of $22,090.24, and authorized acceptance of the 2019 sidewalk infill Phase 3 project.
Mr. Debold, do you want to do the second?
This is Scott Debold, and I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. Man clear.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp. Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Regarding the CIP update, which is the next item on our list, that was also included in the packet. Mr. Ringo, is there anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to add, other than that Cars, the Cars project is the only active project that we're working on right now. Information's in the packet. I'm sure myself or Jim would be able to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions about CIP? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move to the third item, which is a review of the city's ordinance, zoning ordinance relating installation of solar collection systems. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Brian, Director, Community Development Director. Um, this item is something that we've, staff's been chatting about a little bit. It relates to the zoning collection, excuse me, the solar collection systems, the regulations that are within the zoning ordinances. One of the city council's budget goals for this year was to encourage participation in sustainability initiatives, including economic, environmental, social sustainability. And we've had a number of folks go through our solar panel review process, and a pretty consistent comment that some of the requirements, specifically requirement that if you have solar panels that face the right-of-way, you have to go through the planning commission for approval of it. Really, a lot of folks have said that that process can be long and also a little bit cumbersome and increase the cost. So the seeming staff would be, was bringing this to the council to see if there's an interest in the council directing the planning commission to review the zoning collection systems or ordinances with the idea of trying to make those ordinances more accessible to residents and make them easier for residents to go through, to encourage residents to maybe do more solar collection. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Bob?
This is Bob Pape. Yeah, it's not necessarily a question, but I, I've had this discussion with Mr. Dyer previously in reference to that. I think there are a lot of changes to the solar systems now, whether or not it's large, is cumbersome, is bulky, is obtrusive, and, and obviously, and as he had indicated earlier in reference to our trying to, you know, be more, you know, I guess, I guess feasible, you look at alternative ways of saving our planet and those kind of things. I, I think it's a good idea that the planning commission take a look at this thing and find out if we, you know, just what we're currently doing, what changes we can make, but also what other cities are doing, and maybe, maybe look and see if we need to tweak some of the things we're doing. I know that there are locations in reference to, you know, if your house faces north or south, or east or west, it may, you know, prohibit you if you can't face the street to even have one of these systems. And so, yeah, I just, I see a value in that, and that we should probably at least send that for further review and to look at that to the planning commission. I just want to make my, my comments known.
Okay, I've got some hands up. Whitney, then David, and then Scott. Whitney, go first.
Mr. Mayor, um, thank you for putting together the table. That makes it really easy to see how we're the same and how we're different. So we, it looks like we're, well, we are the only city in the table that goes through the planning commission review. Do you know how the other cities handle their approval processes? Obviously, Roland Park says city council reviews. But do you know how they do their approvals?
They do the review process through the building permit process.
Okay. And if we were to no longer require planning commission approval, what would our process look similar? What would you anticipate that might move forward?
It would be, it'd be a building permit process, they, just like most of the neighboring communities.
Okay. Um, I have more questions, unless I want to be fair, though, for everybody's time, unless anybody.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay.
Go ahead if you have more questions.
So the building permit, the conditional use permit is one thing that stood out to me. So that's on top of having a building permit. You also need to have the conditional use permit. If we were to remove that, what alternatives would be used for documentation and approval, just the building permit?
Well, if the planning commission made a recommendation to remove the conditional use permit, then all the documentation would be a building permit process.
With, for the repair removal timeline at the very, I think it's the very last part, what options would we have for enforcing codes if there were, what, you know, recommendations may be made for enforcing codes if we did not have the 14-day repair removal timeline requirement? I never heard feedback that that's pretty aggressive.
If there wasn't a 14, if there was not that 14-day provision in there, we could pursue, you know, not in, excuse me, but solar panels and disrepair, simply pursue them through the nuisance process, like we pursue other nuisances, like chipped and peeling paint and things like that. So if that 14-day provision wasn't in there, wasn't in there, we can just fall back on the nuisance ordinances that are within our code.
One last question. Of all the systems that we do have, I echo Bob's sentiments on the aesthetic standards, and I saw we've had 11 approved applications. Of all those 11, do you know the breakdown between how many did just solar panels versus the shingles, the individual shingles that were required for right-of-way installation?
All the installations have been, excuse me, standard, slimline, solar panels. There have been no shingle solar installations.
Okay. That's all for me.
Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to say that I think we definitely should move forward with the planning commission review, so I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Mr. Debold, and then Mr. Silver.
Yeah, I just, again, I agree with this. I think making the process easier, I think it's a great thing. So again, my question was answered, so thank you.
Mr. Silver.
Yeah, this is Mr. Silver. So I'm a huge advocate of people's ability to install solar. My one concern is I was recently driving down Holiday Drive around 79th Street, and there's a house that installed a gigantic solar array, and it's facing the street, or actually, the back of it is facing the street, and I would just encourage staff and maybe the council to look at that house and hopefully make sure that our guidelines prevent what you see there. But like I said, I'm a huge advocate for solar. I'm not trying to stifle this at all.
Yeah, I think that's basically the reason why we regulate it, which is for things like that. One thing I might add, especially for the newer folks, that if we have, I mean, it sounds like we're going to do this, going to send this to the planning commission, are going to come back with recommendations after they've done a study, and that's the value of having it. Planning commission is they can do the detailed study that we don't have to do. Planning commission is they can do the detailed study that we don't have to do, and it's not our staff doing it. It's a group of citizens doing it, which is, which is of great value. But we can still make modifications with, to their recommendations if they're not completely where we need for them to be. So they, they have no authority beyond making recommendations. So we still have a hand in the process at the end as well. And if there are no other question, I'll entertain a motion in a second. Chris Hands and, Chris, promotion?
I would love to make the motion. I'm pretty excited to make it because I think I was pretty involved when we wrote it in 2011. So that's great. Move that the council direct the planning commission to draft, review, and consider amendments to Merriam Municipal Code, Chapter 74, Zoning Regulation Regarding Issuance of Permits for Solar Collection Systems Installation.
And a second?
I second, Mr. Mayor. This is Whitney Yadrich.
Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Debold?
Hi.
Councilmember Hands?
Hi.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Hi.
Councilmember Knapp? Councilmember Neal?
Hi.
Councilmember Page?
Hi.
Councilmember Silver's?
Hi.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Hi.
The motion passes. Mr. Angle, do we have any staff items this evening?
Only staff item I have, last week, I had shared a letter that was drafted from, I believe, Mayor Copeland in Olathe that was presented to the board about how the county, the Board of County Commissioners, about how the county planned on distributing the $116 million in care funds to local government, local units of government, based upon the Kansas Tax Task Force, who had shared that they would not be distributing any of their cares fund at the state level with Johnson County or Sedgwick County because they receive direct distributions. Again, in that letter, there was a request that the chairman and the two commissioners that represent Olathe would come and make a presentation to the council, wanted to know if there was a desire to send something similar to Chairman Eiler and Commissioner Becky Fast, or we just wanted to wait and see what came out of the, came out from those discussions with the, the B O C C. We continue to ride herd over this. This is not something we're just going to let disappear. But wanted to know if council wanted the commissioner and the chairman to make a formal presentation on their, their, their views on this particular issue. Because we can do whatever. I see a couple of head nods there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Go ahead. Talk to them.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. This is Dave Neal. I think as part of sort of the ecosystem of what's going on at the local level, which will help hopefully at the federal level, show that the municipal governments are, in a lot of ways, being barred from getting the funds. I think it would be worth being on the record stating that we're trying to get it from the county, whether or not we actually get it, get some assistance.
So would it, would it be okay if I crafted a letter with the mayor and had the mayor's signature on it, asking, inviting them to come make a presentation, perhaps at our next meeting via Zoom or the first meeting in July? Dave? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have. Any new business? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hands?
This isn't new business. I'm just curious how, I know it was just today, but how moving into phase three has gone in that I have at least one constituent who has been very worried about the playgrounds.
I have, it's gone pretty well. We removed all the tape, is my understanding, first thing this morning, from the playground. So the playgrounds are open. We, I think I saw two people in City Hall today that were non, non-employees. It has seemed to work well thus far, meaning I haven't received any complaints.
Very good. Any, any new business? I don't hear of any, so I'm going to move forward. It's getting late. And I'll entertain a motion in a second to adjourn. Bob, you want to make it?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
And a second?
Hands here, I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good to see you, everybody. Take care.